The Board of Supervisors for July 8th, 2025 to order. Please stand for a moment of silence. Mr. Rutherford, can you lead us in the place, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get started, there's a couple of notes on the agenda. Please note under Section 4B that the regional jailing renovation financing, we'll have a presentation on that at the evening meeting, not this afternoon. And under other business, Item 7, we're going to have a brief discussion about some county space needs for staffing. So those are in addition to the agenda as it was posted. So we're gonna start with public comments. As a reminder, our guides for public comments, anyone who wishes to speak could have signed up in the hallway ahead of time. I do have the list of those people who did sign up. People that did not sign up will still have an opportunity to speak. When you approach the podium, please, after your name is read in the order people signed up or people approach the podium, speak into the microphone and address the board. Give your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes to give your comments. If you represent a group, please identify the group and you will have up to five minutes to speak. Director Ligon, our timekeeper, will let you know when there are 30 seconds left of your three minutes and also when your time is up. More time can be allowed by the chair at my discretion. As you approach the end of your time, please wrap it up and please be civil courteous and concise in your comments. So I have one person who signed up this afternoon, Elmore Waterfield.
I'm Elwood Waterfield, the most hated man in Nelson County, the most prosecuted man in Nelson County. Philipine tells me every step I can take, every breath I can make, everything I can do in this county. And he has since June the 1st of 2020. Mr. Waterfield, I represent Nelson County. Nelson County will not tolerate either abusive or intimidating language to its staff and employees. Accordingly, in light of your recent repeated unacceptable communications to the Department of Planning and Zoning, you are hereby forbidden to contact any county agency, staff, or employee except through the United States Postal Service or email. You are banned from the premises of all county offices until further notice. This ban does not prohibit you from attending meetings of public bodies such as Board of Supervisors or the Planning and Zoning Commission. If you must contact this office, you may do so only through the United States Postal Service. I'm a disabled senior citizen that's got an incurable disease and both my hands. So writing is not an option for me. You are all elected officials and you all took this oath. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia, and I will faithfully and impartially discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as your title according to the best of my ability. So help me God. This is a violation of my civil rights. You've stolen my home. Lisa Bryant is 18.2-472. Everything on this court order is a lie. Everything. She knows it and you all know it. You've heard David Hill laugh. He apologized, I mean not David Hill, Mr. Embry. Mr. Embry apologized for laughing at urine and feces being thrown on me for two and a half hours in Adamoral County Regional Jail. And all I'm gonna take from you, bunch of crooks, and we're gonna get to the bottom of the corruption in this nasty filthy county. Y'all have a good day and may God have zero mercy on all of you.
Okay, does anyone else wish to speak this afternoon? If no one else wants to speak during public comments, I'll close the public comment period and we'll get on with the rest of our agenda. Next, we have the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented. Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Dr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Parr?
Yes.
Mr. Reifert?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes. Okay, next on our agenda is the VDOT report. Do we have, oh, here we go. You're not Mr. Brown.
I am, just a neighbor. No relations.
Yeah.
Let's see.
Why don't you give your name so I'll have it right for next time.
That's Daniel Brown.
Daniel, I'm sorry.
That's Daniel Brown. It's been a while since I've been here, so. Robert this morning, he gave a few updates to pass along. The 151 slope, that repair is complete. We're doing some cleanup work up there. Mill Ridge, I think there was work on scheduled on that. That has been completed, he said. And of course, we've completed all our four lane primary mowers and our secondary mowers ongoing in Nelson County at this time. And he also let me know that the fallen rock slope repair. We wait on permits on that, so we'll get on that shortly. I don't know if there's anything else that you all had updates on that you all were looking for or you got anything to share.
Okay, Jesse?
Okay, so I had asked Robert, I know we're getting into a new budget year now, so money's kinda get opened up, I guess, as of seven days ago, hopefully. One, it's been asked of me by the Livingston Food Mart, the Chicken Coop Exxon over there at the southern entrance to...
The pipe repair?
Yeah, that pipe repair. That's one I'd like to, if you could find out an update on timeline for that one.
Find out some.
Yeah, and then a second one is Rockfish River Road. I don't have a good 911 address, but it's as you come off of 29 headed that way, there's a, Robert had indicated he needed, that you all are purchasing a new structure for that pipe that washed out over the last year when we got the 30 inches of rain.
Yeah, we can restart on that, I believe, first of August, I guess, or is that six?
First of August.
Six eight thing, six eight.
Yes, yep.
Yeah, first part of August when we can start on that.
All right, good. Yeah, if you could find out about the Chicken Coop down the street. And I do recall there was some email correspondence related to two different areas. One was 56 near Deer Run. Where do the Wootens live? On Wooten Lane? No, not Wooten Lane. But down over there near Deer Run 56, it's like you're headed towards Buckingham. I can send you the address specifically. I know there was some correspondence going back and forth with the sheriff as well as VDOT staff about doing a speed study of some sort over there. He had a site visit, so.
Okay.
Yeah, in fact, I just wanted to find out how that went and what the discussion was. I think it involved adding new signage or some new signage.
Yeah, I remember seeing that email, but I can't remember the details.
Okay.
I'll dig back into it, see what I can find out.
That one, and then there was also some correspondence about reducing some of the speed limit in the Livingston area on 29. I saw that come from the sheriff. I wasn't sure what the timeline strategy was for doing some of that modifying or if y'all still had some studying, but it did sound like your engineering had an idea of slowing traffic down to get to the 45.
Okay.
I don't know if that was like going from a 60 to a 55 or what it is.
Yeah, all right, I'm sure, I'm sure they'll find out.
Mr. Chairman, I may add to that. I believe they are waiting on Virginia State Police to comment on that.
Okay.
And then move it up the chain from there.
And then last, the Eddie Embry Bridge, which is the 29 Bridge right at 6 West and 29, there is a giant pothole there. It's in the concrete portion of the bridge, so it'd be nice if we could get that one.
All right, we'll get somebody checked here.
Yeah, that'd be great. That's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Dr. Ligon?
Just to piggyback off his thing, we requested a speed study on 29 between Food Lion and the high school a year and a half ago. And we know it's complete, but we haven't heard anything about that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I remember that one. I know it's complete, but.
Yeah, and I think that's what the recent correspondence with the sheriff and all that.
Oh, I was thinking that was north of.
North of it. Oh, that's right. Yeah, that's not south.
That's all I've got.
Okay. Mr. Parr?
So I know probably budget issues, but now that we're here, I had a constituent reach out on Horseshoe and Sleepy Hollow, up around that way. I can't remember the address. I think it was on Horseshoe, just down from Sleepy Hollow. So there were some road issues there. And then we have an ongoing issue, I think it's called Hideaway, which is off Ruhala Way up there, and it's real, you know, goes down and comes up and it washes out real bad. And I know there've been some patches, getting some grading done, things like that, but he reached out again last week. So if you wouldn't mind taking a look at that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
We'll be checked on it.
How's mowing?
It's going good. We had our secondary mower going on. Got a few spots we gotta come back and, you know, contract mower, gotta come back and hit again. So far, I think it's going good and I think they're about finished with the secondary. But of course, flexing the primary mower, we had that completed before 4th of July to help out with that travel season and stuff.
Just curious, what is their procedure on signs that are stuck at intersections or near stop signs when you've got businesses putting signs up? I know at my, right across from your business and where I go every day, several times a day, there's a real estate sign for an auction that happened on May the 2nd and it's still sitting there. I just didn't, and they didn't know, you know, it's in the way. I just didn't know if that's something that you all address or if you reach out to the business or how that's handled, but.
Montreal Village?
What I'm saying.
Where is that little?
At the intersection of Lowesville Road and 151, right there, Dollar General, across from the Payton's Garage.
I guess I might pick it up.
How you riverin' on the road?
I guess I might pick it up. Because technically, anything goes in right where you got that permit for.
And they have gotten a phone call from supervisor in that district.
All right, we'll check it out, see what we can learn about it, because I'm sure like you did auctions, I would.
Yeah.
All right, I guess.
Well, I've got two thank you notes for you. The first one, Davis Creek on 29, where they did the, they cleared and dug out part of that turn lane there and the coming out of Davis Creek, trying to get, to see the traffic that comes down from the north. Did a great job clearing that, so thank you for doing that. I really appreciate it. Also, the speed reduction sign that you put up on Route 6, just on the west side of Adile, where it now has a little, you know, turn sign plus the, or the intersection sign plus the reduction in speed to 50 going through there. Thank you so much for doing that. That was a request coming for a while and I really appreciate, you know, that you got that through and that everybody agreed that was a good thing to do.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Why is that long with crews?
Two thoughts, same intersection. Between, on 29 north, between Woodland Church and the brick, the next brick structure or the business there, there, I don't know if it's more grooming of it than cutting it back. I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know. There's a beauty salon, you know, Ronnie's there and the Belchilongo Mexican food truck is there once a week. That curve coming around when you're heading north is, has pretty poor visibility there. And I know there've been some grading of banks a little bit, the Davis Creek one and others, and so they didn't know.
See what do you think, whether it's mowing or grading or whatever.
Yeah.
The other thing with that intersection, when you are in, what is that zone called in the middle? The crossover, the signs for pulling on the road the wrong way and there's another sign, they really impede the view of that lane of 29. Like, and it doesn't matter the size vehicle we're in. You have to almost pull into 29 to see, and I don't, I don't know.
When you're looking south to go north?
Yes, but it's into the, it's the north lanes, but you're looking south. It's two signs. One is don't pull this way, but I don't know if you feel that way too, but when you're crossing through there. But it is very hard to see the one lane, the inside lane.
All right, we'll see if we can get some adjustments in that cause.
Okay, do we have anything else? Okay.
What was Montreal Village?
Well, it was more of a Facebook post, but there's cones in the road and gravel in Montreal Village.
Yeah, there's a pothole in, is it Montreal or is it Village? Whatever. Over in that area, there's a pothole. It's a pretty serious type of pothole. Like, you could definitely lose at least part of your car, you know, a quarter of your car could go in that sucker. You all have identified it and have place codes around it, so. But I haven't seen it, other than off the internet.
I'll see where that's at on.
It's either Montreal or Village, one or the other.
Okay. All right.
Okay, Daniel, thanks so much.
All right, y'all have a good evening.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, Item 5, new and unfinished business, the Livingston beautification committee request.
There you are. You got it, Gail.
I'm Gail Dastres. My last name is not common to this area, so you can call me Gail. I'd like to thank the board for the 2024 grant that we received and I'd like to request another $2,000 grant to cover our expenses for '26, '27 for beautification. We documented all our expenses for the last 18 months and when I talked to the finance person, she said you need to apply for another grant. So that's what I'm doing. We've enriched soil for 13 planters throughout Livingston, flowers for all the planters through three different seasons, and the purchase of seasonal decorations which can be reused. We've also purchased greenery to embellish the bench at the town center. These are some donations. Saunders Farm Store has given us some donations and then the Chamber of Commerce got these pumpkins for us. So we accept donations, just keeping up the planters themselves. And then we have six other planters that we have established in Livingston. And this is our county seed and we want to keep it beautiful. At the end of 2025, our funds will be depleted. At this point, we have about $400 in our beautification grant account left. We would like to continue planting seasonal flowers and we hope to upgrade the seasonal decorations so they look better and more organic in origin rather than plastic. I had, I purchased these giant eggs that we stuck in the planters and they're plastic and they're not well loved by everyone. We'd like to do wooden, you know, paint wooden things. Patty Avalon has been helping us with that. We also need to seal the barrel planters to protect them from the ravages of the weather and there are other areas of Livingston where we can improve with shrubs or decorative perennials if we have the funds. I believe that's all. Thank you for your consideration.
Well, I have had the great honor of having to plant some of these flowers and the very hard work that Vicki, Patty, and Gail have put into making sure that our village stays really pretty. And of course, their work is noticed by a lot of the businesses and those around and the constituents of Livingston and those who come and visit. I would hope that we could extend another option for this grant of, and it's $2,000, correct?
Yes, to cover for '26.
Then we'll administer that grant the same way we did this time. Is that good with that?
I think so.
Yeah. So if y'all are all right, I'm gonna make that motion.
Okay.
$2,000.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion for $2,000 to go to the Livingston Beautification Committee in a second. Is there any discussion?
I just wanna say to Gail and your team, thank you for all the work you all do. It's obvious. I know the businesses in the community appreciate it as well. It's nice to see so much activity and everything that's going on, so.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And it is a group of volunteers. It's about seven to eight people, a few of them.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Okay, can we roll call vote, please?
Dr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Parr?
Yes.
Mr. Reifert?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I just wonder if we just make this a line item in our budget rather than having to ask every, if we can just, I think that's something we should consider moving forward, is having something in the budget for this.
Right, I was gonna suggest that maybe we recommend to them that they do submit an annual budget request for y'all, just build into the budget if you'd like to.
Jesse, I agree with that. All right, done. So moved.
Okay, fiscal year 2526 salary and classification system. Grace?
Good afternoon. Resolution R 2025-50 amends our salary and classification system to include a 3% salary adjustment for Nelson County personnel, both full and regular part-time, as well as a 3% salary adjustment for all regular part-time and full-time employees employed by a constitutional officer or in the registrar's office. This 3% is inclusive of the 3% across the board percentage based salary increases effective July 1st, 2025, for all constitutional officers and their compensation board funded permanent staff. An additional 6% salary adjustment for all full-time dispatch employees effective on July 1st, 2025 is also included in this. This is inclusive of 6% across the board percentage based salary increases for all compensation board funded dispatch positions in sheriff's offices effective on July 1st. And additionally, this resolution authorizes the pay range for our public safety dispatcher position to be increased by 6% for fiscal year 2026, which is pursuant to the new compensation board salary scale for dispatched positions. And additionally, the pay ranges of all other positions within our pay classification system shall be increased by 1.5% for fiscal year 2026. This is to help us try to maintain competitive market rate salaries. And I will add the raises were included in our FY '26 budget, which was passed on June 25th.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Moyer? Wait something.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanna emphasize, we did not discuss this much during the budget process, but just want to be sure the board is aware that we're proposing to raise our salary range scales by 1.5%. We did this last year and this is in an effort, like Ms. Moyer said, to try to maintain some competitiveness between our salary and compensation studies so that when we do complete another one, we don't have such a large increase as we did last time. So I just wanted to make sure the board was aware that was being proposed.
Thank you. Okay, were there any questions for Grace? Okay, if not, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we adopt Resolution R 2025-50, Nelson County Board of Supervisors, fiscal year 2526, amendment of salary and classification system.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Dr. Ligon?
Yes.
Mr. Parr?
Yes.
Mr. Reifert?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes. Okay, thank you, Grace. Okay, this being an ordinance confirming a one-time employee bonus. Thank you.
Ordinance O 2025-06, pursuant to Virginia Code 15.2-1508, the county may provide for payment of monetary bonuses to its officers and employees. The 2025 General Assembly approved funding to support a 1.5% bonus for all Department of Social Services employees, constitutional officers, regional jails superintendents, and their compensation board funded full-time permanent employees on July 1st, 2025. This ordinance encompasses both those employees and all county department full-time employees to receive a 1.5% bonus as well as a $200 bonus for all regular part-time employees. This bonus was included in the FY '26 budget as well, which went to public hearing on May 13th and was passed on June 25th.
Okay, so I have a question. This isn't the same 1.5 that you just referenced, Candy?
No, it's a different 1.5. It's a one-time bonus.
Okay, and this is based on what was provided by the state, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay, are there any questions for Grace? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Just curious, how much does that translate to gross dollars?
I had a feeling you might ask that, but I did not relook at the budget to look it up. But I think it was several hundred thousand. Well, the bonus itself was about a hundred thousand. And then I think that the other percentage raises was another 200 and some thousand. I believe that's accurate. I can get that number for you, I just don't have it right now.
Okay, I was just curious about, so the state covers this?
Yeah, the state will cover the bonus for the state-supported positions and then anyone who's not, it'll be fully county funded.
Okay, and we already budgeted for this?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt ordinance O 2025-06, Nelson County Board of Supervisors, ordinance providing for the payment of bonuses to certain county employees.
I'll second.
Okay, motion second. Any further discussion? Not seeing any.
Dr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Parr?
Yes.
Mr. Reifert?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes. Thank you, Grace. Okay, next we have consideration and information on the Pine River water and sewer rates.
The first level slides you all have seen before during last month's presentation. This just reiterates what our total customer base is as of March 25. They have 206 customers, five water-only, 18 sewer-only, 83 sewer and grinder pump customers and water sewer and grinder pump customers of 100. You've seen this chart before as well last month. This just compares the base service and usage fees for water and sewer between the Service Authority, Livingston Sky with Weston Systems, Wintergreen System, and then the county's Pine River Water and Sewer System. This also reiterates the fees and charges for connection fees for each of those systems. At last month, we looked at several different scenarios for phasing in an increased rate structure.
At last month, we looked at several different scenarios for phasing in an increase rate structure. The longest one we looked at last time was a five-year rate phasing. Here you can see the five-year differential just splits the difference between the Piney River water sewer rates and the Service Authority rates by equal amounts for, by five, and then applies that years one through five. We were asked last month to look at a six-year rate phasing. We did two scenarios, one where there are equal increases each year. The differential's divided by six and then applied to years one through six going out, which would give you a year-one minimum total with grinder pump of eighty-two dollars and seventy cents. And then in year one, a minimum total without a grinder pump, you would be, have a rate of seventy dollars and ninety-nine cents. The next scenario we looked at was a six-year rate phasing with a two percent per year inflationary factor in years two through six. So we divided the six-year differential, divided the difference by six to get the six-year differential, and then added that plus a two percent factor in years two through six. And this provided a minimum total with grinder pump, year-one amount of eighty-two dollars and seventy cents, and then minimum total without grinder pump at seventy dollars and ninety-nine cents. Then in year two, it would increase to ninety-eight dollars and eighty-four cents with a grinder pump, and then without to eighty-four dollars and thirteen cents. And then so on out to year six until this one does not equal the Service Authority rate. It is obviously a little bit higher because of the escalation from year to year. In that it was to sort of take into account some level of increases by the Service Authority. So we might be able to maintain some, some catch-up there. This slide just shows each of these scenarios on one page. The six-year rate phasing with the two percent inflationary factor, a straight six-year rate phasing and a five-year rate phasing. And then there were other fees and charges to consider equalizing, such as the yard hydrant fees, unauthorized water sewer use fees, copies of county rules and regulations, new service opinion fees, voluntary disconnect and reconnect fees for water, and a misuse damage fee minimum, which are all outlined here on this chart. We did make a change from the original chart with the advisement of Service Authority staff that the availability fees for water and sewer are only applicable to the Wintergreen System. So we made that change in this chart from what was originally in the packet. So the next steps, we have question and answer and discussion of any of the information presented. We can look at developing other rates. One of the things discussed was looking at a rate that covered our worst operational year break-even point. We have not yet developed that, but we will be working on that. Maximum usage fees and connection fees could be advertised for public hearing with the other operational differences proposed for public hearing at a later date, because that would also require an ordinance amendment. I think just in staff discussing this, we would recommend that the working group meet again to look at all the operational differences and then reach consensus on county ordinance changes, bringing those back along with the proposed fee changes to the board for public hearing authorization at the August or September regular board meeting. And this would provide for a public hearing in September or October, allowing adequate lead time for customer notifications prior to a possible January first, twenty-six effective date, or, you know, whatever timeframe the board would be interested in. I think we may have a little bit more work to do. And it makes sense to me to have all of the ordinance changes done at once, have one public hearing on all of it, rather than kind of splitting the two up, but that's just what I would recommend, but we're happy to do whatever the board would like.
Okay. Any comments from the, from the board members that were part of the discussion that led up to this with the Service Authority?
So, I thank you for the six-year and the six-year with the two percent inflationary factor charts. I apologize for not communicating exactly what I was looking for on the inflationary part. What I was looking for, let's just use exact numbers, for example, year one, both of them are eighty-two dollars and seventy cents, or seventy dollars and ninety-nine cents, right?
Right.
My intent and what I thought I was asking for, where, you know, you have a typical, you know, you, what we have now is a straight line. Over time, we have, you know, starting here and going up in equal increments every year. That's what the six-year showing. What my intent was to do it at a lower and then kind of end up up here. So in year one, instead of being at eighty-two seventy, for example, it'd be at seventy-five dollars. And then in year two, instead of being at ninety-six, it'd be at eighty-six dollars. And then at year three, instead of being a hundred and eleven, it might be a hundred and four. You know, and so easing into where we end up at whatever that number needs to be in year six, a hundred and fifty-three, or whatever that number is. But that we were easing into it a little bit. Of these two, you know, the six-year, because with the two percent, we're going, in six years, we're at one fifty-three seventy. At two percent, it's at one sixty-seven. So that, you understand, am I?
Yes.
You understand what I'm saying? That's what I was thinking.
I, I, yes. If you can give the staff a starting point that is palatable to you as a reward, then we can look at doing a more gradual increase scenario.
I mean, I know we need to get there. I'm just trying to soften it for the residents that are already struggling. And I understand the fairness of what the expenses are with the system and what work needs to be done and where Piney River is now and has been for a long time and where we should be. I get it. But I would, I do wish we could ease into it. Of these two, you know, the six-year plan is the better, for me, is the better one. But I do wish it could be a gradual six, rather than, I'm making sense?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
I guess my question, so we had two originating thoughts that came here. One was, we're operating in the negative, which does not bring me joy at all. The other thing was, we were planning to get out of the water sewer business, and I guess what is our timeline on that?
I don't think they, I don't think they want to get into the Piney River water and sewer business until we fix this.
I agree. That's why I'm asking that, because the longer we stretch it out, the longer we're in this business, is where I was going.
Yeah. But I think having an end time is better than where we are right now, for sure.
Two, two comments on that. Thank you for all the work y'all have done, for sure. The, the only thing about David, the recommendation that you just made is that it puts a real steep burden on them in the, in the final years of that, which is much more radical than, 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 you know, doing.
Pay me now, pay me later.
Well, pay a lot later.
Yeah, I get it.
So, so if that, if it was, you know, perhaps if it was equalized, I think that might be a better idea. It's certainly worth, worth considering.
And just, if you don't mind, just add on to that. The reason I thought that is because in six years, just natural growth in, in, you know, in incomes and in, you know, you know what I'm saying? As you go through time, the income will, will be rising, whereas right now, everything's based on present value of money at an even growth versus, you know, next year, hopefully there would be a three percent or so adjustment in the income in the household, and the next year, a little bit more, you know, so it wouldn't be flat. Numbers, yes, you're exactly right. I see what you're saying. My thought was, over that six-year period, they might be in a position, number one, to budget and be prepared for it a little better, and number two, to have an increase in income in the household. That's, but I, you know, I'm, I'm not going down that hill, but it is something I would like to look at.
The other, the other consideration, and I don't know if y'all talked about this, but if we agree to this with whatever, you know, with our, in our discussions with the Service Authority, I don't, I don't know that there would be any impediments to keeping these terms, but changing the ownership so the terms could maintain in place. I don't know if the Service Authority would have to amend any of its things to have differing rates, because I know now, Wintergreen is the only exception to that in one case. So, it seems like if this is something that we're able to do, I, I don't know if it would be possible for us to release ownership of this before the term of the changes, if you know what I'm saying.
Right, yeah.
We weren't left with that impression at the meeting?
Uh, this is my question.
Yeah. There are so many things that we need to fix. This is just one on, on the list. I, I do realize that changing ordinances is more work, but if this seems to take a prolonged amount of time for us to come to a consensus, changing the, the fees, you know, for, for hooking up and, and kind of getting things more in line with the Service Authority, for one, helps us income-wise if there were hookups and things, or at least in that. But then it also shows the Service Authority we are making steps forward. So I realize it is more work, but getting this ball rolling would look good.
Yeah, that's definitely the case.
You know, I'm, I'm fine with the five to six-year transition period to try to match the rate. How we go about it, you know, I think is up to, you know, whatever we feel, whatever Mr. Parr and company kind of come to a conclusion. I do agree with a start date of January one. I think that gives people enough time to posture. So I, I'm on the five, six-year thing. I think if you guys can meet one more time and figure out what that rate looks like, you know, that would be good, and the sooner we can do this, the sooner those constituents can prepare for whatever that is. So, a six-year plan of getting there is better than the zero plan that we've had.
Yeah, I say we go back, discuss the six-year plan, discuss Ernie's idea of, you know, if we get this in writing and get it set.
Yeah.
What's their timeline on getting us out of the business?
And the process, yeah.
And a reminder question, a reminder, what was it that we, oh, jeez, what was it? It'll come to me in a second. Add it right on the tip of my tongue. Didn't we have all, or I guess the pump station, is that done yet, or is that?
No.
No.
No, we're still, we are in the process of ensuring that the specs of, of the station we're gonna order are gonna work on the ground.
Okay. I mean, that's, that's a hundred grand.
No, more than that.
Couple hundred grand. Oh, great.
Three twenty-five.
Three million.
No.
So, yeah, I, we need to begin this process of whatever that needs to look like, five to six years, you know, I think is reasonable. And we give the people Piney River as much due diligence as we can. Now, I, I do have to concur with Mr. Parr over the history of Piney River. They had to get it because they had to get it. This wasn't something that was necessarily eyeballing for development. It came down to a water quality and a sewer perk issue. So I am cognizant of that. And it's a similar story down on Craig Town Road, too. Craig Town Road had a very similar bad water situation, so.
So I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Ligon and Supervisor Parr, I believe in our meeting with them, they said they tend to increase their rates by about fifteen percent every two years. So it's doubtful, in my mind, given that, that we're ever gonna actually ever match up exactly over the six years, so.
It's true, we would have to revisit it, especially because at the end of five or six years, we're not gonna be at the same place. The, the factors that cause the Service Authority to change its rates are not purely inflationary. It has to do with needs and debt service and things like that. But, you know, getting this started at the first of the year, as Mr. Rutherford said, absolutely true. I think that's, that's the most important piece. More discussion to be had about what it's gonna look like going forward as well. But I think we should have a long-term, you know, kind of timeline and plan. We could divert from it if there's ever any reason to, but we should definitely have something on the horizon that, that demonstrates what we would have to do and what would have to be done to, to the turnover.
Absolutely. So, I mean, is there a year-one base rate that the board is comfortable with stating today? Or is that something we need to work with you all, with the work group on to determine?
I'm very interested in what the rates need to be for break-even. And I would like to achieve that in the first two years, if not the first year.
I mean, that is.
I, I don't know what it is, so I don't.
It's not even that. At six years, we're not at the break-even?
No, that's matching the Service Authority.
Okay. Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay, okay. I got you.
Yes, operational break-even.
I don't know, give, you know, give, given the, the number of, of customers we have and the costs that are gonna have to be incurred with, you know, getting up to speed, I don't know that that's going to, I mean, while it'd be interesting information to have, I don't know that it really would affect, you know, what our rate change would be first year. And it just doesn't seem like it would, because, you know, you know break-even's gonna be much higher than anything that we've projected.
By about fifty thousand dollars, yeah.
Right, exactly. Exactly. Now, that's good information to have, but I don't know if we need that before we decide to increase.
I mean, just to put it in perspective, rough math, going from where we are now, and I think I'm looking at the right numbers. So we're at sixty-eight fifty right now, right? Sixty-eight fifty and fifty-nine fifty.
Yes.
So ten percent is seventy-five thirty-five and sixty-five forty-five. That's a ten percent in the first year. I mean, I'm just throwing that out there for consideration. Not that I'm saying that's the number. I'm just saying, I, in my mind, I'm like, alright, what does ten percent, what does ten percent look like? That's what it is, seventy-five and sixty-five.
Remind me, we have to do multiple, we still have to do a public hearing every year before we increase the rate, or are we able to do this one time?
Not if you set the path.
I guess I'm not entirely sure about that. I've seen another county has done advertised rates for three years.
It's probably a legal counsel question.
Yeah, yeah, we'll check on that to be sure, but, I mean, I think you could advertise a plan, but it.
You might have to do it every year.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be really hard to project five years out.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
You know, what, what's actually gonna look like and then be held to.
I just, I also want to remind, if we go up on the other rates, that takes less pressure on the monthly rates. Does that make sense? If we, so to connect, right now in Piney River, to connect, it's two thousand dollars. Anywhere else in the county, it costs four. And it puts less pressure on the monthly bill if we attack that first. So if, if really the concern is not increasing the monthly bill as much, we need to hit this faster. Does that make sense?
You know, it's, it's interesting when you look at, when was the last time y'all raised the connection fee, Robert? A while back. I know, didn't you reduce it in the last ten years? Twelve years ago, has it always been the same? Anyways, back ten years ago when I was building Nelson, you used to say, when you heard the words, "We gotta hook up to county water and sewer", like, "Oh, my God, that's ridiculous. It's expensive." And now we look at it today and it's now competitive. It's about, and that's what it should be. It shouldn't be a premium for doing conventional in-water hookups. So, I mean, as you look at those numbers, I, I have, as a home builder, I definitely don't necessarily have a lot of anxiety of us seeing that rate increase somewhat. Again, I'm not gonna sit here and say that I want it to be a premium to water and sewer, but in somewhere like that, it's less dangerous, because there are some aspects of water and sewer that are unique. such as boring under the road. I've had to do that before, and that's like, not cheap. No, it's not. It is not cheap at all. And so, you know, you kind of have to take some of those aspects into consideration.
I've got a question. Was there any discussion about, um, bringing the other rates into parity, or were we just talking about?
Yes.
The other major fee that was brought up several times was grinder pump maintenance. For the service authority, uh, people that have grinder pumps pay almost an insurance-type thing in case there's a, a situation. That is not occurring in Piney River. Um, and it sounded like a lot of the burden to replacing it is on the county, and that's not the case on the service authority. There also has been no education, uh, to the Piney River facility people on how to maintain their grinder pump and things not to put in there. So, we are having a larger failure rate because no one's been educated.
That was one of the things we were gonna look at was, um, Were there many repeat offenders in grinder pump replacements and, and see if there could be some education there?
Are we having much success just getting the cores worked on?
Yeah, we did get cores worked on, and we replaced those.
But you still gotta keep three new ones on hand. I know, I've done that a couple times, just get the cores replaced, and it's still thousands of dollars.
Kind of the insurance, um, aspect that Dr. Ligon mentioned was, I think that's, um, part of the monthly grinder pump fee being the twenty-five dollars and twenty-five cents. That's why it's so much higher.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm in the five to six-year parity. I, I would suggest that, uh, Dr. Ligon and Mr. Parr and whoever you had at the last meeting meet one more time, just to outline what those numbers should look like, and then come back to us and present the break even metric as well as matching speculatively to get in parity with, uh, county stuff. So, that's just my two cents, Mr. Chairman.
And maybe when we have, um, when, whatever our decision is, when we put it out for a public hearing, did it not be a full five or six year? It would be our best guess of maybe two years, something like that.
So, part of the service authority's preference was that there was a clear, defined path to get to the, the rates that they have, and doing that is not a clear path.
I mean, I wanna know six year, and the constituents deserve to know the six year.
We could probably advertise that, I mean, I don't know, we could check to see if this could work. If we could, you know, advertise like two rates that would def, be definite, but also advertise the plan just for informational purposes, I don't know. So, people are aware of what the plan is. But you also want to have some flexibility, I think, to adjust during that six-year period if we need to. Just something to think about.
So, I am, I under the correct impression we're not going to push forward and do a public, like, pick worst safe case scenario, public hearing, and then decide. Y'all want to wait?
I mean, I, I, we could do a public hearing between now. I think January one is a clear start. I'm down to do a public hearing whenever. It's just definitely, I would suggest we have a public hearing before October, September, by September, October.
I'd also suggest that we have something much clearer than we have right now before we go to public hearing.
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, definitely, we could stick with our timeline and authorize in September, public hearing in October, and we're still good.
Yeah. I think that, that should be.
And we, that gives us August to.
And you guys can meet one more time. We can even talk about this in August if we need to.
I think the plan is to meet again end of this month.
Do we have that set?
Do we have it set? Please check, because I can't recall at the moment.
I don't have anything on my schedule for that.
I think we might have just agreed on end of July sometime.
Let's do it before the twenty-fifth.
And we'll report back at next month?
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you, Candy. Okay, Candy, you are up with your county administration.
Okay, um, first item on the report, um, to do with our social services building project. We received four bids within the project budget estimate. Um, these bids range from five million four hundred seventy-two thousand five hundred to five million eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand. Right now, PMA is reviewing the bids to determine the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. Uh, this entails checking references and subcontractors prior to their recommendation of contract award. Um, the actual bid tabulation form, I think, will be available for release by the end of the week. Uh, staff is recommending that the board sort of be positioned to possibly meet later in the month to authorize awarding the contract. Additionally, we're working with PMA Davenport and Sands Anderson this week to further refine the amount of borrowing needed, um, from the VRA bond sale. Uh, more information on our county staff and, um, NCSA work group meeting. Uh, we met on June eleventh, and I believe y'all recall who, uh, was designated for that group, being myself, Ms. Spivey, Ms. Moyer, Dr. Ligon, Mr. Parr, George Miller, Jennifer Fitzgerald, Mr. McSwain, and Mr. Height of the Service Authority Board. Um, we, the group reviewed the history of discussions of transferring the system, um, the need for uniform regulations, and the Piney River system being financially self-sufficient. Information to be gathered for the next meeting includes a break even rate during the most recent worst year, looking at grinder pump replacement orders to determine any repeat customers, and defining operational differences between, um, both of our policies. Um, work group, uh, less Mr. Height, Mr. Parr, met on site for a tour of the Black Creek Water and Wastewater Treatment Plants at the Old Livingston Wastewater Treatment Plant behind Calvary Baptist. Um, and it was confirmed during, um, these tours that the water volume and treatment capacity were both issues that would need to be addressed to accommodate any future growth in the system. Um, water treatment is currently at seventy-seven percent of the permitted volume of the treatment plant, and DEQ has an eighty percent threshold. Um, and our group will continue to meet monthly. So, I don't know if Dr. Ligon has anything to add, um, from that, but it was a really good tour. Learned a lot about water and wastewater treatment.
I would be curious what that three percent equals in terms of, is it like two houses, four houses? Zero houses? I remember when there was the speculation of the developer coming to Livingston, that they said fifty houses.
Um, currently, so, the service authority, uh, people that represented the service authority at the second meeting laughed at the report essentially, um, and felt things were more dire than what that report suggested that was sent to us. I think they would get ill about one house being added right now, the way things are.
Well, already, what is the last, the house that built six months ago?
The situation seems a touch more dire than what people were suggesting for, to me, for the last year or two, but it's just kind of what I gathered.
Okay, um, moving on to the Region Two Thousand Services, Services Authority. Um, they've already met on June twenty-fifth. We adopted a member tipping fee rate of thirty-four dollars per ton and a non-member rate of forty-four dollars per ton. The FY twenty-six budget of seven million nine hundred and twenty-four thousand six hundred and eighty-two dollars was also adopted, and it was based upon seventy-one thousand two hundred and sixty-five member tons and a hundred and twenty-five thousand and thirty-eight non-member tons. So, we are also working on regional water supply planning, as has been reported previously. Um, the Central Virginia Planning District Commission membership voted to authorize them to take the lead on regional water supply planning activities on behalf of the Middle James River Two Regional Planning Unit, of which we are a part. Um, they are applying for a Virginia Department of Emergency Management grant funding for the overall supply plan update, um, in July, and are requesting a letter of intent to participate from each member of the RPU to be included with the final grant application. The letter includes the commitment to provide a fifty-four hundred dollar local match upon successful award of the grant. And I did put it in here, but I believe the grant funds they're applying for is four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It costs a lot to do these plans. So, the board's consensus for staff to provide this commitment letter is requested. Um, I did attach the draft letter to my report. Um, and additionally, they will also be applying for initial DEQ grant funding in September to be used for updating member data. The board would consider providing consensus for me to sign the letter, um, commitment to participate in the grant and provide the fifty-four hundred dollar local match if awarded. That would be great.
Would you do that now?
Did you go to that? Did you go to that?
Um, yes. I, I, I went to the first meeting. I didn't go to the last one.
So, we're doing fifty-four hundred dollars to participate in this overall supply plan. Is this kind of like similar to what happened in the early two thousands when we had the huge drought in Nelson? We had that.
It may have stepped.
Geological thing, uh, okay.
From that, yeah.
So, it's some similar thing to that nature? Okay, well, we did it once before.
Yes, hopefully they'll be successful with the grant, and that will cover the majority of the costs.
And is there an equivalent north of us, or is this?
Yes, there's a, a, there are multiple regional, uh, RPUs that are having to update their water supply plans also.
Is there a reason why we're doing this one instead of that one?
It has to do with the watershed.
Yeah, um, we're in the James River watershed. Everyone else is in. The Ravanna.
Ravanna.
Yeah, so there are a few of us that are in different planning district commissions, but are in a separate RPU.
No, I understand.
So, yeah.
Okay, okay. I, I'm fine with doing this.
So am I.
Okay, so we need a motion to sign the letter of intent to participate in the Middle James River Regional Water Supply Plan?
Either way's fine.
Second?
Okay, yeah, let's vote. Let's take a little call.
So, we have motion and?
Dr. Ligon, I second it.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sorry. Dr. Ligon?
Yes.
Mr. Parr?
Yes.
Mr. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. So, tonight you will receive a presentation from ACRJ staff in Davenport on the project scope and financing during, yeah, the evening session tonight on the regional JR renovation and expansion project. Um, approval of the financing will be sought from the board with ACRJ board approval to be proposed at the regular ACRJ meeting on July tenth, this Thursday.
I have a question about that. So, say, I mean, it's based on our incarceration rate. It's the percentage that we pay. Who, if our incarceration ra, incarceration rate drops, do we pay less?
Yes, so it's actually based on the, the five-year average percentage. And so, yes, um, if our five-year average changes, then our commitment will change. That's my understanding.
Okay, and it's, it's number of people and days served, right? It's, it, the combo of those two things, or?
Um, it's based on bed days.
That's either in the report, we can ask that this evening, sure, and get that information.
Absolutely.
Okay, um, a brief update on the Department of Social Services Agency Corrective Action Plan. On June twenty-sixth, uh, Mr. Johnson, who's the chair of the DSS Board, Mr. Burdette, the director, and I met virtually with the regional DSS office team to go over their first month's review of the corrective action plan items. So, practice areas reviewed consisted of child protective services, foster care prevention, in-home services, permanency services, and resource family services. Um, DSS staff is working through a referral casework backlog, completing courses of recommended training in these various areas, working to improve case assessments and documentation, including timely entering of case data into the various DSS tracking systems, and timely closing out of case files within those systems. Regional office staff provided guidance on improvement in each of these areas. Staffing was discussed, including, uh, adding another family services supervisor position. Additionally, it was noted that the DSS case tracking reports were readily available to supervisors and the director to assist in the management of case files within those systems. Um, the next review will be July twenty-fourth.
So, I was under the impression social services was fully staffed, so they're wanting another person, or do we lose someone?
Um, they're wanting to, I think it's another, I think it's another supervisory position. They do have a supervisor that, I, a staff, well, they have a staff member that's in the family services area that's on maternity leave. Um, and they have had some staff leave, but they have also brought in some contract staff to take those places. But the thought, right now, there's one family services supervisor who's managing all of these service areas, plus having to get training on all of these service areas. And the regional staff felt like, um, that was stretching her very thin. And that, the possibility of adding another supervisor would take some of that burden from the current supervisor. Um, and it may, may spread the workload and the training, um, required across the two people, and therefore make them more effective. At least that was the discussion.
Is there more to do because of the backlog, and if the backlog was gone, there would, it would just be better? You know, I mean, like a?
Yeah, um, Yeah, I'm not sure about the answer on that. But that, yeah, that was the internal discussion with the regional office and, and Mr. Burdette.
Did it seem positive, or did they feel like things weren't going as well as they had hoped?
Um, it did seem positive. It was the first review, so obviously, I think they found a lot of areas that need improvement, and I think they do have a lot of work ahead of them to get where they need to be. Um, so I think subsequent meetings will probably show a little bit more as to are they actually making progress in these areas or not after going through the review, the first go-around?
Last question, I promise. Um, do you feel that, uh, the head administrators there are stepping up to the plate to help this person, or their solution is just to hire another person?
Yeah, that's a tough question to answer, 'cause I'm, you know, I was just in there and meeting and out there on a daily basis. I can't really speak to how much the leadership is, what is helping that particular supervisor. I know the regional office is helping her a lot. Um, as far as, you know, going through case files and reviewing what needs to be done, and, um, you know, making sure the training's being scheduled, those types of things. I do think they could better, the leadership could better utilize those tracking mechanisms that they have within their multiple systems and generate the reports needed um, to be able to say, hey, you know, this case file is still open. Have you completed everything you need to complete in order to close that file? Yeah, I do think there needs to be some better management in that way, at least until they get to a better place. Yeah, he, they're just gonna have to stay on top of, um, the case management, I think. And I think that was one reason our statistics looked so bad online. Is because there's, there could be better follow-through in documenting the cases. there could be better follow-through in documenting the cases within their systems, which then get reflected in the statistics, um, that the public can see, if that makes sense. That was what I gathered just from that one review.
Thank you.
Yes. Um, okay, moving on, we did end our fiscal year June 30th. Um, and on a cash basis, our revenues, including the yearning balance of $4,089,263, exceeded our expenditures by $3,692,072. Of this amount, $3,272,300 was projected and built into our FY '26 budget as carryover. And, uh, this carryover is used to cover one-time expenditures of capital outlay, non-recurring contingency, miscellaneous carryforward, and non-recurring costs, um, and also the cost of the one and a half percent bonus for full-time employees and $200 for regular part-time employees. The balance of $419,772, um, will offset the $600,000 in additional fund balance budgeted for the four school buses. And here, I just have a little chart in the report that shows FY '25 year-to-date revenues, including the yearning balance of $51,663,619. Um, and then you deduct the FY '25 year-to-date expenditures of $47,971,548 to get that, uh, carryover difference of the 3.6 million. As far as our revenues, our local revenue collected came in $167,715 higher than the amended budget. The state revenue collective came in $436,533, lower than the amended budget, excuse me. Federal revenue collective came in $230,101, lower than the amended budget. So total, the net total revenue collected was $498,919, lower than the total amended budget before, including that yearning balance of $4 million. This is primarily because most state and federal revenues are, are grants or programs which operate on a reimbursement basis. So if the funds aren't spent, the reimbursements aren't made, and funds aren't collected. On the expenditure side, at the end of the fiscal year, $47,971,548 of the $52,162,539 appropriated or expended. This left a balance of $4,190,991 in unexpected, unexpended funds. With that amount, there were unspent departmental expenditures of about 2.1 million and then two, approximately 2 million in unspent transfers, non-departmental and capital outlay funds, um, also including reassessment, CSA, and contingency funds. Uh, need to note that some departmental budgets did contain grant funds specific to that department that were not fully expended, um, and will be part of the carryover, um, budgeted in FY '26. So our FY '25 carryover amount, um, the savings of $4,190,991, netted against the total revenue collected, that was less than budgeted of $498,919, um, yields the carryover amount of $3,692,072. Um, that's kind of a lot of numbers to take in, but I'm happy to answer any questions about that. And also want to note that our auditors will accrue back both revenues and expenditures related to FY '25 through the month of September. So this will result in different, um, FY '25 audit results because those are shown on this modified accrual basis. And what I was just discussing was on the cash basis. Um, did attach preliminary end-of-year revenue and expenditure detail reports, um, for you to look at at your leisure. Any questions about that at the moment? Okay, I'm happy to answer any questions if you take a look at this later on or what happened. Our meals and lodging tax collection, um, the charts are attached, our lodging units were 823 this month, down from 826 in the previous report. Again, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Candy? Okay, thank you Candy.
Finished the year very strong, so, especially on the local revenue side, happy to see that coming like it did, so. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Board reports? Anyone want to start?
I can start.
Okay.
Um, so Planning Commission, uh, we met after our group session, uh, working on zoning ordinance things. Um, we have had chatter about meeting and trying to, um, discuss more details so that those joint meetings are a touch more productive. Um, we also changed, uh, the fact that the representative from the Board of Supervisors no longer a voting entity on the Planning Commission, uh, but more of a liaison between the two boards.
But she can be used as quorum.
I am used as quorum, well, the Board Supervisor Representative, who is currently myself, can be used as quorum, but then also, uh, is also part of, of defining, um, how the board is set up. So, uh, is willing and able to vote on who is Chair and Vice Chair.
Makes sense.
Um, I would love to get Dylan some help if we can sooner rather than later. Um, just putting that out there.
Yeah, I believe we have some interviews scheduled for this week.
Excellent.
Yes. We've been trying to push that along.
Excellent, that, that's good. I think I discussed enough about the meetings with the Service Authority, I don't think I really have anything else to talk about with that. We hit all the highlights, so.
I feel like we had a meeting last week, so.
I think we did.
We did. You good?
I'm good.
Um, so, um, Social Services, um, to piggyback on Candy's report on the CAP, we, after that meeting, we also had a meeting on the PIP. And, uh, up until that point, I don't think, I don't know that you all were aware, but there was, um, a personal medical issue with the Director, and he missed, um, about two weeks, week and a half, um, as a result of that. And so when we met on, um, the 26th or whatever that date was, he had just been back in the office for two days. So, just really getting started. So the purpose of our meeting was to review the finalized PIP because the initial meeting took place before the PIP was actually finalized. So we wanted to have a meeting, make sure everybody was on the same page with the timelines and how it was set up and what was expected. So it was a good meeting, but not a lot of substance other than reviewing the, the document itself. We also had a transition of leadership on the board with, um, Mr. Johnson going off as Chair and, um, Edith Napier coming on as Chair. So we have not had a board meeting or a PIP meeting since that took place July 1st. We have a board meeting next week, so hopefully we'll have an update. And I have a feeling, I don't know this, but I bet we will have our next PIP meeting the same day as the CAP meeting. I think that kind of falls into line pretty well, 'cause everybody's there and we just meet after they're done, so that's what's happening there. Next, going on, moving on to EMS, very excited about this. At the last EMS council, um, you know, we had just, had just come off of a horrible Memorial Day accident at Crabtree Falls. And, um, so the council met and was talking about some challenges that they encountered during that, one of which was communication with, um, the helicopters and, because Pegasus can't go in and into the smaller areas, and I'm probably gonna screw this up, but I think there's a private helicopter group that came in, got the victims, took them to Montebello, and that's where Pegasus came in. And there were some communication problems. So, an idea came up, if we had just had internet, that they could have maybe made an internet call or done something. Um, so we, I went to Firefly, um, the day after the EMS council meeting, the, that very same day, I got a, uh, call back from somebody at Firefly, and within about three days, they were onsite installing a public hotspot Wi-Fi, um, spot at the Montebello Fire Department. So now that's available for anybody. You, if you have a loved one fall down at Crabtree Falls, you can run up there, you can make a phone call, you know, if you're in the woods, whatever, not, and in addition to locals being able to go up and use it if they need, um, to use Wi-Fi. So that is live and active, um, as of last week, I think.
Awesome.
Yeah, that was pretty exciting. Moved pretty quick, have to thank Firefly and the leadership there for making it happen so quick. Um, but yeah, that's all I have.
Jesse?
We had a, uh, Livingston Merchant Association meeting recently. That went fairly well, I had to leave early 'cause I had some work obligations to attend to. Dr. Ligon was also present. Um, we, as they worked to kind of design what things looked like, uh, we were excited to be putting out some banners. I don't know if you guys will be rolling those out. We just got approved by AED, didn't we? I think we did. I think I saw an email. So those will be going up here soon. Uh, looking forward to just seeing that kind of produce some excitement, uh, for the village itself. Uh, hopefully we'll get a TAP, VTAP grant update at some point. I had sent Robert an email asking that question, uh, referencing the sidewalks in Livingston. And other than that, I think I've seen you guys every week this past month, so, um, you were all part of that.
June.
And we didn't have a PDC meeting. We do not have a PDC meeting.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay. Um, well, let's see. We haven't had an opportunity to catch up on things since the last meeting, so I've got quite a few things. I participated in two sessions of COP Camp at, uh, Ty River Elementary, um, just talking about, uh, the, the county, the government, being a supervisor, all that kind of stuff. I think they did a great job organizing that this year. Um, there were a couple of school board meetings, they, they passed, uh, their new budget, and, uh, they had a couple of good news items that, uh, that, that made the newspaper. One is that, uh, chronic absenteeism is, uh, really down this year, which is really good, thanks to a program that they, uh, got initiated this year. And also, um, teacher retention at the high school and middle school is at a higher level than it's been since pre-COVID, so it was good to hear. Um, took a couple of tours, um, Jesse, uh, was at, uh, the Virginia Distill, Distillery, Matt Warner was there, um, got to take a look at that and, uh, discuss.
David was there too.
That's right, sorry. Sorry. Why is it so easy to remember that Jesse's there? Is it 'cause he fills the space up?
Yeah.
I don't know. I don't know.
A frequent attender of that one.
I don't know what that is. Um, and, uh, Jim Saunders dragged me over to Saunders Brothers to give me an update tour of, uh, of the facility there and everything that they're doing, which is, uh, was, uh, really excellent. Um, the TJ PDC Regional Housing Partnership did have a Zoom, and, uh, we got some new demographics that were updated from the.
Yes.
From, uh, and those were good to see.
We need to send those to the board.
Yeah.
I, I, I sent them to.
Did you?
Yeah, I sent them to Candy, you've got them somewhere.
Really good.
If not, I can send them back to you.
It's definitely worth a read.
Yeah, most of, most of it, it applies most directly to, uh, the, the, the meet at Charlottesville area, but the bleed over into Nelson County is noticeable.
Oh, yeah.
So it's really interesting stuff. Um, I, I spoke, uh, on the 28th at the Crawford Snob Dedication, um, 1,400 acres were taken out of the, uh, of the, uh, development plan, master plan, and put under a permanent conservation easement, um, mostly for, uh, research and, um, and, uh, and open space. So there, there won't be any development on that area, and Doug Coleman also announced his retirement there. Um, and, um, filling Doug's shoes is an impossible task, but I'm sure someone will be able to do it. Um, uh, yesterday, uh, Java Board of Directors hired, uh, our new CEO, who was the interim CEO, Christina Evans, she's been here, and we'd met her before, but now she's, uh, the official new CEO, Java. And, um, the only other thing is that, uh, this morning, Robert and I were up at Wintergreen going over the punch list for the Wintergreen wastewater, uh, treatment plant, so, um, that's all I've got. Lots of things going on, for sure. Um, appointments, Amanda, do you have information for us for appointments?
So we do have a couple of applications for different positions, uh, but if you don't mind, I'll just review what we have going on right now, so you're up to date. Um, I know, I emailed Mr. Parr about this, but our representative in West District for the Library Advisory Committee, Audrey Diane Evans, passed away unexpectedly. So that is a position that we would be looking to fill. Um, she did a great job over the last, uh, 12 years probably, uh, in that position. So that's a new, uh, vacancy we need to fill. Uh, we're also looking for a South District person for the Library Committee. Uh, so any help in finding folks for those positions would be much appreciated. Um, Economic Development Authority, we had this application for Margaret Claire previously, um, her schedule's kind of lightening up here, and she is interested in being, uh, reconsidered for the EDA. Uh, so that is an application you have, uh, in your packet today. Um, we're also looking for someone on the Ward Zoning Appeals for the alternate position, Mary Cunningham, um, did not wish to be reappointed. Um, Social Services Board, we have North District, uh, vacancy as Diane Harvey's term limit, um, was reached, but we did receive an application today from Kate Rutherford. I did provide paper copies to you today and by email, so that is something you could choose to consider today. And, uh, lastly, the Ag and Forestville District Committee, we need a, uh, landowner appointment, but we do not currently have an applicant for that, so we are advertising that as well.
I was gonna suggest for the AFD, we should email some of the folks who just joined up in Montebello. I can't remember what the guy's name was who was pretty impassioned in it, but that's the guy who I would email first.
Yeah.
I think, I think, I'd, I'd like to consider, uh, Margaret Claire's application for appointment to the, uh, EDA.
Are we gonna do both at one time or do them separately?
Um, I'd like to do them separately. I haven't had a chance to review the, uh, the, the DSS applicant yet. Like to take a look at it. But can, can, can we deal with, uh, the EDA first?
Yeah.
Okay.
I move we appoint Margaret Claire for EDA Board.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Rutherford?
Yes.
Dr. Ligon?
Yes.
Mr. Parr?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Thank you.
Because we just received the applicant for, uh, DSS today, um, can we keep that advertised and move that to next month? Is that okay with folks?
I mean, I've been having conversations with her as the DSS representative and, um, given her history with the division, with the system, and, you know, being a former foster, current, I guess, foster family, um, I move that we approve Catherine C. Rutherford to fill the vacancy on the Social Services Board.
Yes, I'll second.
Okay, you have a motion and a second. Um, any further discussion? Okay, roll call please.
Dr. Ligon?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Parr?
Yes.
Mr. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
I'll stay. Okay, um, I think that's all we have to take action on. Okay. Okay, can we, um, look at correspondence? Anyone have correspondence to share with the board?
Most of the correspondence that I have received was related towards, um, VDOT info. And of course, the, the situation around DSS has had a lot of my constituents concerned. And that's still a situation that we need to continue to monitor. And I look forward to still receiving updates from staff and our liaison there.
Okay, anyone else? Um, directives? No, no directives, it sounds like. That would take us up to, uh, other business, uh, as presented. And, um, we were gonna have some discussion on the county space needs. Um, Candy, is there anything you can, uh, help us get the discussion started on this?
Um, I'm just, just a little background on the impetus for the discussion, um, was the, um, school board had requested a joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors. Um, for possibly later this week, specifically Thursday. And, um, with the topic being, um, their potential relocation, um, primarily. So that has, um, you know, just brought up some questions as to, um, maybe being better positioned to have that discussion possibly before meeting. And, and what would the board, I guess, like to see from the school board in terms of, um, information to, you know, actually be discussed and facilitate a more meaningful, um, meeting on that subject. Um, I did email out to the board the information provided by Dr. Hester this morning, uh, related to their current number of employees, their five-year forecast of employees. And, um, also five-year forecast for square footage needs. So you should have that in your inbox. But I, I, I think the point today is just to have a discussion about a potential joint meeting on this subject and what, what that structure looks like and what information the Board of Supervisors would like to see, um, kind of to facilitate that discussion and meaningful dialogue about it. That's my understanding.
Yeah. Okay, um, are, are any of you prepared to have a discussion about this or, um, I have a few ideas, but I'll hold them until if other people have, have thoughts.
What's the, um, my only thought in reading this, uh, Excel spreadsheet was, I guess it would be nice to have how much room we have on each floor. I, I have no concept of really, does that make sense? Is that somewhere on this spreadsheet?
Um, I, I don't think.
Well, I guess there, there is current, but.
Yeah, it's not by floor. Um, I think it's listed in alphabetical order of department, yeah.
When did you send the email?
Ten, about ten o'clock this morning.
Ten twenty-five.
That was just a school board one.
Yeah, I'm wondering what you're looking at, cause all I see is.
Yeah, Dr. Ligon had requested that I resend out the space needs, um, spreadsheet and that was sent out maybe yesterday sometime.
Yeah.
Well, there, there was some discussion about trying to schedule, uh, a, uh, a joint meeting, um, sometime this summer for sure, because we've kind of looked at next summer as being a possible, um, you know, probably, I guess, the earliest opportunity for us to be able to take some action on some of this, having to do with the far of all the departments that we're looking at and maybe, I guess there was what, a five-year window that we put out to maybe say like what the needs might be for the next five years. Um, but also what spaces might be available, um, that would be able to handle, uh, you know, increased, um, county presence in the county. And that seems to be something that, um, Candy, you sent out some, I saw something where you, 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 you mentioned, uh, the, the Community Center on fifty-six. As a possibility.
Yes, that, I just noticed that building's been vacant for a long time and, you know, it might be a good fit. We pulled the, um, Commissioner Revenue's tax card on that just to check square footage and things like that. Um, so I think, you know, there's some potential there, um, in, in looking at the school board's needs and, and things. I don't know, you know, what the owners' plans are for that building. I haven't spoken to them. Um, I just suggested to Dr. Hester that maybe they follow up and, and, um, see if that could be a possibility for them.
Yeah, um, and another possibility might be, uh, you know, more active community centers. If, uh, you know, it would be a little bit of a boon to any of the community centers to have, um, a presence from the county. Regular presence and a regular source of, you know, revenue and presence and such to help them along. And I'm thinking the Nelson Center, the Heritage Center, uh, I don't know about Fleetwood. Um, you know, there, you know, there's, there's possibilities there. You, you would probably want something more centrally located. But, uh, you know, with easy access as people have to get to the schools from, you know, from the offices, but, um.
One of the biggest differences related to this versus like the Health Department is the state paid for a lot of the construction at the Heritage Center. This instance, we're paying for all of it. So that's my only cautionary piece to that discussion, you know. I, I am still very curious as to what capacity exists in the existing school system. You know, I know we've said the Alpha Wing multiple times. I still, I mean, I remember it was vacant a good bit. They used to have their meetings down there. Um, you know, I'm just curious as to if that's still being utilized as classroom space or whatever.
Yeah, I think Ms. Hausner uses that. Suzanne Hausner.
Okay.
I think, I think.
I don't know. I, you know, I, of course, they have to kind of decide for themselves in some regard what's the, in what building or what space is most applicable. You know, I, how many, has our staff met with their staff? That's the only question that I kind of have going into this, you know, in length to discuss this before we have a joint meeting.
Well, I mean, it's definitely premature at this point for us to have a joint meeting. I mean, we need to sit down and look at exactly, that's what I'm thinking. That's what I'm looking at now is the spreadsheet, just overall.
To add the school board's thoughts in, in this, their answers to the spreadsheet and then can we have it printed on some nice big paper?
And, and we need to sit down and then have just a brainstorming session of, you know, where are we five years? What, what do we need? You know, we're talking about, what does the Sheriff's Department need? What does Commonwealth Attorney need? What does, you know, all these other departments need? And, um, I think before we sit down and, and have a conversation with any of those departments jointly, we need to get a big picture feel.
Cause in reality, it may not be the school board moving. It, it could be a different department. We have to analyze this first before there's a joint thing.
Yeah, um, I, I think that it, you know, that we should recognize that I think it's probably premature to say, you know, next summer is really our goal or anything like that. I think we should, um, you know, I, I, I think we should, you know, take the time to do it right. If the needs are more immediate than that, it would be, if we really do need to prioritize it and get it done sooner instead of later, if there's a real reason to do that, then we should know that so we can, you know, take quicker action. I was a little bit under the assumption that that's the situation that we have. And if we're gonna be looking at a timeline for next summer, that we needed to, you know, you know, be fairly aggressive on doing this.
Well, we, we've already said our timeline was next summer.
Right.
I mean, yeah.
Based on, based on the Commonwealth's Attorney's request to the board.
They were already behind the eight hole.
Yeah, so, um, it probably makes sense for us to.
But you're also jumping the gun, assuming it is the school board that is moving.
I'm not saying we don't need to start meeting our board and having these conversations a little more aggressively. I'm saying it's premature for us to have a joint meeting with the sheriff or with the Commonwealth Attorney or with the school board or with anybody until we get a better feel for the big picture and where we're gonna go, you know. And somebody needs to be having a joint meeting with Saunders and see if that's a space that's available for anything.
We also have to be careful because we don't want to lose our bargaining power.
Well.
If necessary.
I'm just saying, yeah.
The likelihood of that building's pretty low, but.
I understand. I understand. And then, and the Nelson Center is a possibility. I mean.
There's several buildings in Livingston for sale currently, so I wouldn't limit ourselves to anything. But looking at the graph or the Excel spreadsheet, um, what departments are more expensive to move than others?
Yeah, I mean, we need to have some sort of a work session, I think.
Agreed.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So, um.
You wanna schedule a work session with us, August?
Mid-August.
July is kind of shot for me.
Yeah, mid-August.
I might be dead August. Um, we can pick that right now. I can do.
Tuesday or a Friday would be preferred for my schedule.
I can do August the fifth or nineteenth. You said a Tuesday or a Friday?
Mm-hmm.
The sixth through eighth, I'm gone, and the thirteenth and fourteenth, I'm at the VACO conference.
Do you want me to before or after?
Meeting that month is on the twelfth.
Yeah, we have a regular meeting on the twelfth. I'd say we do it the week of the nineteenth, the eighteenth, the nineteenth and the twenty-second.
Either day works for me.
I'd say it's just the nineteenth.
What's wrong with the fifth? I have no issues with the fifth.
I, I won't be here.
Are you here the eighth? Oh, you're gone the eighth. Never mind.
Yeah.
The fourteenth?
I'll, I, I mean, I can be back by the eighth, the eighth afternoon.
It would bring me joy to have a meeting before our board meeting.
Okay, um, afternoon of the eighth?
Like four o'clock.
Okay.
I'd have to do like a four.
That's fine. I don't know that it will be.
And that's the day we're getting the board packets out for the next meeting. It might be a little bit of a crunch time for staff, but if it's later.
Well, you're, you'll probably, you know, be called upon to have things together for the, for the meeting, so.
I mean, we go back to the fifth.
Well, I can't be here the fifth.
Oh, that's right.
After the board meeting is always good. Unfortunately, it doesn't match up with.
Nineteenth?
Dr. Rigan's wishes.
It's okay, things rarely do match up.
So I can't do the afternoon of the fifteenth. I can do it during the day.
So nineteenth?
Yeah, I'll say nineteenth.
Nineteenth's good.
Four o'clock again?
Nineteenth at four o'clock, going once.
How early can y'all do it on the nineteenth?
I agree with you.
How soon do you need to, I mean, I don't need to do it soon. I'm just thinking of staff and, I mean, four o'clock, the end of the day, the turn, it's never good.
You've got DSS Board.
DSS at one.
And EMS Council at seven thirty on the nineteenth.
Six thirty.
Or six thirty for the captain's meeting, yeah.
They just, all of them, they're all six thirty.
Oh.
Yeah, I mean, um, EMS.
Okay.
They've been moved to six thirty.
Where's that one at? That meeting? How far do you have to drive for that one?
EMS?
Yeah.
Is that just down the street?
It's not like.
I'm just thinking about staff. I mean, four o'clock, that, that sucks.
Can we do three?
I can do three.
Will that give you enough time after DSS?
DSS will be done by two fifteen, two thirty, so it'll be perfect.
Okay. If we need to switch it to three thirty, we probably could do that. Okay.
Three o'clock on fifteen.
Okay.
So we can have you all continue, excuse me, your August twelfth meeting to the date and time?
In the old boardroom?
Old boardroom?
Yep.
Hopefully, we'll check, make sure that's available.
Okay.
I guess, so, um, I guess, what direction or what advisement should I give? I mean, Dr. Hester's here, but, um, give them as far as do they continue to look at available spaces? Do they wait until we've got kind of our act together on?
More information's always better.
What we think, so.
I mean, the more information we have.
I mean, they'll have some priorities that are important to them, you know, logistically and space-wise and, and such. You know, it would be good to, you know, see a list of priorities and then we can kind of consider if these are gonna be able to meet the criterion that they've got.
Okay, so as far as the previous timeline that was discussed, uh, as far as having options by December and possible move next summer, that's kind of on hold right now. Until you all meet and discuss.
I mean, we haven't really heard a reason why it still can't stop yet. I mean, it's.
I don't think we're ready to put anything on hold.
I mean, if there's a circumstance that arises, then we're stuck.
Yeah.
We haven't even started, so we have no idea.
Right.
At this point.
Right.
I mean, I say we sit down.
All right, but some of the discussion was it may not be them leaving, depending on what the discussion is.
I didn't say that.
I.
We don't know. It's too early to tell anything. I think, I think that's showing the importance of us having a work session.
Okay.
I mean, here's the thing, as it relates to the situation, the one entity that probably has, is also, you know, breaking at the seams is the administrative side of the school system. They're also going to need be figuring out that situation for themselves. You know, I would still say that they're probably the most likely candidate for us to figure out that transition. And I think we still keep the timeline as hopefully summer. That's not to be like we're going and getting an unlawful detainer and evicting him on, you know, July second, so to speak. But, um, I think that should still maintain the, the target rate with our work session planned in August. And staff should be meeting with school staff and have, figure out some of that logistics.
So let me, let me just throw something out. If we had that information together and we were able to review it before the, before this meeting, why not have it a working meeting with the school board? We had, if we had all that information in front of us, we'd be able to initiate the discussions about what the needs are. Um, instead of having to come back and do that again, it would, mm, to my way of thinking, it would be a, a, a productive meeting to sit down with the school board for them to, you know, be able to voice their priorities. And we could take a look at the information and start bouncing things back and forth instead of, you know, it's more like an us-them scenario that I'm not as comfortable with.
I just feel like the cart's before the horse. We haven't analyzed the needs. And we're wasting their time.
I'm just, I'm just saying.
We're gonna be talking about every single constitutional office. We don't want all of them to show up to the meeting and participate during the meeting.
No, no, no. I was, I, I was thinking we have that information, so we know what space needs are going into the meeting. And then we can discuss with the school board what, you know, how we can serve them.
Well, they sent us their needs and their projected needs five years is gonna be put into our spreadsheet and now we're gonna look at it in August.
I'm just saying, I, I think that it's, you know, I, 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 I wish we could have a joint meeting to talk about it.
No one's saying not have a joint meeting, talk about it. We're saying we need a work session to talk about it ourselves.
I understand.
And we need a consensus before we ha, we talk to them, cause right now it's just feelings.
We could have that data and review it, you know, for, you know, a month from now.
Someone tell me the history of how the school board ended in, up in the courthouse. Someone tell me the history of how the school board ended in, up in the courthouse.
It doesn't matter, they're here.
Like, I mean, I just wasn't sure.
It doesn't matter, they're here.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that not be in the case, at least, you know, having, uh, you know, a, a, a general idea of space needs, possible, you know, spaces that could be utilized. And I don't think we're, if there's anything else that anybody else wants to have or ideas that are more familiar with real estate and space needs and construction that I'm not privy to, that would be interesting. I don't think we're looking at construction possibilities for, for next summer, but we certainly would, you know, there would certainly have to be modifications of existing structures to be able to do anything, I think. It's really unlikely you'd be able to walk in and, you know, and it would be a seamless fit wherever it is. And, and places would be more possible, that would need less work than others. Those are, you know, another kind of thing that we want to think of. I mean, yeah, there is a lot to think of, but.
I, I just feel it's not respectful of their time or ours if we go in without looking at the spreadsheet first and talking about it amongst ourselves.
Okay, is there, is there anything else we need to tell you before we have a working?
Is there any other information that we can bring to you all that would be helpful in these discussions?
If I could just get the printed off thing and you tell me when it's ready, I'll come get it, but I, the spreadsheet is an extensive amount of information and on the computer, it's just harder for me to, I like to write my thoughts down on it. Thank you.
Okay.
And I guess if, if anyone thinks of any other information that might be helpful in the meantime, you can certainly send it to staff.
Okay.
Try to provide that.
Okay. Okay, and any additional input from, from Dr. Hester or the school board would be receptive to, for sure. If they had anything to contribute to the discussion for us. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Can we have a motion to adjourn and continue to our evening session?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Uh, let's do a roll call.
Yes.
Parr?
Yes.
Mr. Rutherford?
No.
Yes. Okay, back at seven o'clock.
You know, he used to do that?
Are you?